Okay, the meeting of the Everett School Committee for Monday, February 1st, 2021 will come to order. Ms. Lessen, give a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abaze?
Present.
Mr. Barrows?
Here.
Ms. Cardelo? Mayor Di Maria? Ms. Lambert?
Present.
Mr. La Monica?
Here.
Ms. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Panerisi?
Here.
Ms. Sarni?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here. We have nine members present. We do have a quorum, and if we could all please rise and salute the flag. Flag allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. If you could take the calendar from here?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Barrows?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to request a moment of silence, not only for your mother, but also for a woman who has made us laugh so much and worked for the Everett Public Schools. Ms. Selena Parker has left us physically, but her presence will be with us always in spirit. So I'd like to request a moment of silence on her memory.
Thank you. We'll have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We'll resume the regular order of business.
Thank you. Item number two is the, oh, sorry, item number three is the reading of the records.
Make a motion to waive the reading and place it on file.
Second.
Second.
A motion made, has been made to waive the reading and place it on file. Can a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardelo?
Yep.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine votes in the front of you have waved and placed on file. Next item, please, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. Item number four is public comment.
Make a motion to open public comment. I'll second.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to open public comment. I do have a second, so if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardelo?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, nine in the affirmative. We have opened a public comment. If we could please hear from the first speaker, please note, public comment, you have three minutes, and we're going to ask you to identify yourself and your residence. Thank you.
Helia Patino Milano and 30 Veterans Avenue.
Hello, how are you? You have three minutes.
Am I supposed to turn my camera on? Okay. Um, I think hybrid is a stressful topic right now, and I want to make sure it's addressed, and I'm glad we're able to do this in this space like this. And so in my opinion, like a lot of other students at Everett High, we believe that hybrid is a risk to students, teachers, staff members, and families, not just in Everett, but outside of it too. Um, and to think about it, our numbers aren't dropping and could possibly be increasing. According to studies for Boston Public Schools, schools with the highest risk of transmission are located in communities with greater than 200 new cases per 100,000 people within the last 14 days. Boston's average was 942 per 100,000 people. And people have become infected in the high school building without even being in a school hybrid schedule. So come to think about it, many kids and teachers could become affected with this virus, and it could potentially lead to further damage rather than helping. To finish off, I think a plan for new infrastructure updates like ventilation systems in the school building is a smart way to lower CO2 emissions, even with masks on, leading to lower risks of transmission. Considering that plan is costly but very important, a good backup plan would be portable air cleaners with HEPA filters. It is a significant step to take into consideration. Also, I think it's probably a hypocritical thing to do to have a Zoom meeting on whether or not it is safe to send children back to school. When we have to do this virtually, because it's not even safe enough to discuss this worrying matter, and that is it for me.
All right, thank you for your time. Next speaker, please. Hi, Mr. Moran, do we have anybody there?
I think we're all set.
Okay. So ladies and gentlemen, that's it for those willing and asking to participate in public comment.
I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to close public comment. At this point, I'll just take a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, in the front of us, we've closed public comment. Roman, Roman number five, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you so much. So Roman number five is the superintendent's report, number one, which is the superintendent's update. First, I just want to thank you, Chairman Parker, and good evening to everybody watching and at home, and all school committee members. Before we begin, I also did want to extend my condolences and those of the entire Everett Public School community to Mr. Frank Parker on the death of his mother Lena, who was an EPS employee and a loving wife, mother, and grandmother. Obviously, Chairman Parker has an incredibly heavy heart as he presides over this meeting tonight. You know, I wish we were together so we could offer our condolences to Chairman Parker in person, and I think one of the many heart-wrenching aspects of the pandemic has been its impact on how we are able to console our friends and families at times of loss. So I know I speak for everyone when I thank the chairman for finding the strength to be here tonight. It is clearly an incredible and inspiring sign of his commitment to our students and families. So before we move into the contents of this week's report, I did want to share one thing of immediate importance. Starting this week, we are no longer providing live translations of our school committee meetings. So what we are going to be doing instead is recording the meetings or dubbing them in Spanish, Portuguese, and Haitian Creole and posting them on our website as soon as possible. So this change will be more manageable for our family liaisons and also especially while we are in the Zoom environment and it's difficult to manage the simultaneous interpretations in our breakout rooms. So in addition, our families will not have to, so they will be able to watch the meetings at their convenience after we post them, and we will continue to have our family liaisons available to residents who do want to make public comments. So they still will be here for the public comment portion of the evening. So tonight's update features the latest on our vaccine plans, which unfortunately have been delayed at the state level, but which will hopefully, but which will hopefully not cause too great of a disruption to our plans to reopen our schools under a hybrid model. You will get to hear from the ETA leadership this evening about their thoughts on hybrid learning, and of course, I do look forward to hearing from all of you as we work collectively and productively on the critical components of this plan. I will also share a small budget update with all of you, which is encouraging overall, as well as a budget timeline that will take us into July. This is part of our ongoing efforts to speak more freely, creatively, and transparently about the budget process and our priorities. But first, I have an update about tomorrow to share that many of you probably are already aware of. Tomorrow, Tuesday, February 2nd, is going to be a snow day for the Everett Public Schools. Our buildings will be closed, and students and staff do not have to log on for remote learning tomorrow. So I do hope that everyone will safely enjoy their first day, snow day of this unforgettable school year with your families. If we have to change our schedule on Wednesday, we will make that announcement via robocall, text alert, social media, and our website sometime tomorrow. If you do not receive a message, that means we will be resuming our normal schedules and routines on February 3rd. Also, our lunch distribution, which is normally on Tuesdays, will be moved from our Tuesday day to Wednesday, February 3rd of this week. So families who normally come out on Tuesday will please come out on Wednesday. Instead, you'll be able to pick up your meals at the exact same locations, also at the same times that you normally do from 2:30 to 4:00 p.m. So I am pleased to announce that Everett High School is on the verge of opening or beginning its interscholastic athletic season. So starting this week, the Crimson Tide Boys and Girls Basketball Teams and our Hockey Team will begin practicing for the 2021 winter season. So to be clear, you do not need to grant any approvals or be furnished with any new information regarding the winter season. The tenants of the Greater Boston League's plan, which you approved in December, are still firmly in place. Safety is the guiding force of our return to athletics, and this effort is being led by our Athletic Director Tammy Turner, who held a Zoom meeting with winter athletes earlier today to go over the extensive list of protocols and procedures. The primary safety measures of the GBL plan are included on this slide. And the GBL schedule calls for a month of conditioning and practice sessions with interscholastic games to begin in early March. We are bringing back varsity athletes only this week as we want to perfect all of our procedures with a smaller cohort of students first. So we will add junior varsity teams to the mix next week. Unfortunately, we will not be fielding freshman teams for winter sports this year, but hopefully freshman squads will be included in spring sports. And also, again, as an unfortunate reminder, no fans, including parents, will be allowed to attend games when they do begin next month. Because Ms. Turner is overseeing our athletics-related COVID-19 operations, she is not going to be coaching the girls' basketball team, so that role is being capably handled by Riley Dunn. Stanley Chamberlain, the Assistant Principal of the Parlin School, is our boys' basketball coach, while Caverian School Principal Alex Noman leads our hockey program. As always, Ms. Turner will be in close contact with the Board of Health Director Sabrina Ferracano as we monitor the launch of our sports season and the health and well-being of our student athletes. Schools across the state are already well into their winter season, so I'm very happy that our students and those of our fellow GBL districts can participate as well. And we are going to be doing our best, and we'll provide more information later on trying to have those games livestreamed or recorded for later viewing. Also, is a great announcement for this evening, as most of you already know by now, Everett High School has named a new head football coach. So Rob DiLoreto, an Everett native and Everett High graduate, has accepted with sincere joy and appreciation the chance to lead the Crimson Tide Football Program. I know I speak for Ms. Turner and the Everett High leaders when I say that we are very happy to give Mr. DiLoreto the chance to accept what he calls his dream job. His genuine and tireless interest in the success of our student athletes, our high school, our community, and our football team made him a natural selection. And judging by the feedback I have already received over the last week, the sentiment is clearly shared by the community at large. You can read the complete details of Mr. DiLoreto's, Coach DiLoreto's extensive coaching career in the profile on our website. He was an assistant with us in 2017 and 2018, and he has held coaching positions at Arlington High and Pope John, where he won a Super Bowl. And just as importantly, Mr. DiLoreto is an accomplished educator who has had a long and successful career at Arlington High, where he currently serves as the Dean of Students. He possesses all of the skills needed to oversee every aspect of our football program. An obvious question that many may have is when our team will be able to be led out onto the field. So the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association has created what is being called a Fall Two Season, which will run from late February to the middle of April. So there are a lot of moving parts to this plan, including a set number of mandatory conditioning and outdoor practice sessions that need to be held before any games are played. The Fall Two Schedule, which overlaps with the winter season, could be impacted by late winter snowfall that cancels outdoor practices. So hopefully, Coach DiLoreto's tenure will officially begin this school year, but it will be a little bit before we can announce this with certainty. But again, in the meantime, I do want to welcome Coach DiLoreto to our community and wish him the best of luck as he embarks on what we hope will be a long and successful tenure as head coach of the EHS football team. As part of our continued efforts to engage our parents and guardians with cost-free enrichment opportunities, I am thrilled to announce that we will be offering 15 spots in ESOL classes at Bunker Hill Community College. So those who complete the course will receive three elective college credits. Places in this free pilot program will be offered to parents or guardians from our structured English immersion schools who speak a language other than English. Interested participants will be enrolled on a first-come, first-served basis, and outreach is being directed by our school leaders at the Lafayette, Caverian, Parlin, and Whittier Schools. In addition, our family liaisons will record multilingual voice messages announcing this opportunity so that we can get the word out. There are no academic prerequisites required to take this class. So parents and guardians who are interested in this unique opportunity will be directed to email our EL leader, Adrian Kaminsky, who will enter the necessary information into Bunker Hill's online registration system. Adrian Supino, sorry. BHCC Registrar's office will then contact those who are enrolled in the class. So in other words, we are trying to make this process as easy and accommodating as we can for our families. So this first course is entitled Voices of Everett, and it examines what makes our community unique and dynamic. So from history to newspaper headlines to stories inherited from one generation to the next, students in this three-credit seminar will learn about the significant roles stories play in the Everett community. So the students of the class will get to read and analyze narratives about Everett and voice their own stories in prose and poetry. So the remote classes will be held on Mondays from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. and feature a mix of synchronous and asynchronous learning. There will be an office hour at the end of each class if students can question and receive help. So obviously, our longer-term goal is to offer more spaces for programs such as this, but this pilot program is an exciting and important first step in our mandatory mission to develop connections among our district, our community, and our families. So I commend everyone in our administration who worked on this effort, which was more considerable than what this update suggests. We had to explore several different options for this initiative and considered various variables on behalf of our parents before working on the details of this particular partnership. So we are happy with what BHCC brings to the table, and we do hope that Voices of Everett ESOL Classes is just a small beginning of a much larger and farther-reaching project. So yesterday also marked the beginning of Black History Month, and we have three projects we are doing at the district level that I wanted to share with you most, especially our students and families at home. So for students in kindergarten through grade five, we are holding an art contest in which students can design colorful posters that will best reflect what Black History Month means to them. In grades six through eight, we are sponsoring an essay contest in which students can write about a particular individual who inspires them during Black History Month. We will award first, second, and third place prizes totaling $700 for the winners of this contest. And for EHS students, we are asking entrants to choose one of three quotes from prominent black figures and describe what these quotes mean to them in 500 words or less. So we will award first, second, and third place prizes totaling $850 for the winners of the EHS essay contest. And we also look forward to spotlight prominent local and national black Americans as part of a brief spotlight series. So we will share these on social media as well as on our website. So while we, you know, need not go into the specifics of the tragic events that have taken place around the country, which have served to raise awareness about our relationships between our police departments and the communities they serve, you know, Everett, I do think, has been on the forefront of making sure that these are positive relationships. And many eloquent, inspirational, and persuasive things have been said about every dimension of this conversation. So now we believe is the time to begin forming, you know, more enhanced and deeper partnerships in, that enhance what we already have had. So in an effort to build on the strengths and skills that our youth in Everett possess and to leverage and bolster those skills, we will be establishing a paid internship pilot for students to work as liaisons between the Everett Police Department and the Everett Public Schools. So to start, the internship will be conducted via Zoom, and the time commitment is approximately 12 hours per week. Developing and collating student surveys, identifying new student supports, and hosting community workshops are just a couple of the examples of what the internship might entail. And the intention of the internship is to allow students in Everett to learn about the services that the EPD provides to all residents and to deconstruct the perception of police officers and help generate new initiatives that foster that greater relationship between EPD and the youth in Everett. So this program attempts to find new and creative methods to promote positive and productive relationships between our police and our youth. So interns will be reporting to EPD Lieutenant Sabatina Rosa or his designee from the Community Services Division of the Everett Police Department and a representative from the Everett Public Schools. So we are in the process of formalizing the exact job description with the EPD, and we will share it with EPS students as soon as it is completed. But I can say that a demonstrated interest in criminal justice, psychology, sociology, and/or other comparable career pathways will definitely be among the preferred experience. So this project is springing from a very positive working relationship with the Everett Police Department and with the support and cooperation of the city. Again, I just want to give a special thanks to Lieutenant Rosa for helping us coordinate this effort and for sharing the information and communicating information between us and the police department. I want to thank Chief Maisy for all of his support, and I look forward to providing updates about the EPD liaison position during future superintendent reports. So I will now briefly discuss the fiscal year 2021 budget, which I understand might seem, you know, a little odd given the urgency of the school year, but we do have some positive information to share as we always try to use a wide-angle lens in our budget priorities and fiscal planning. So last week, we received our preliminary budget estimates for FY '22 Chapter 70 funding and our net school spending requirements, both of which come from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So I'm happy to say that the proposed numbers are encouraging. The estimates based on figures included in Governor Baker's proposed state budget for the upcoming fiscal year call for increases AIDS to district by 3.7%. So this, more importantly, would result in our Chapter 68 to rise by approximately 12%, which results in a great mix of relief and excitement. So the key change to the Chapter 70 formula is due to the start of the phased increases called for by the Student Opportunity Act. Obviously, we will have a wide range of services and initiatives to plan for in advance of what we expect to be the start of a typical school year next September. So these preliminary budget figures point to a great start to those efforts. So this slide provides just a high-level overview of the budget timeline we are looking at starting this month, and which includes the news I have just shared with you. So we will continue to work on our enrollment and our staffing projections, as well as chargeback costs to the city and budgets for all departments and schools through the next few months. During this time, we're also going to continue to get finalized budget allocations through the House and Senate Budget Processes. We will be presenting our draft budget to the Subcommittee of the Whole in March, upon which the budget will be recommended to the School Committee for Public Hearings and a budget vote to be conducted, hopefully, by the second school committee meeting in April. So the Mayor's Joint Convention on May 10th will be a financial forecast presentation by the city, whereupon the City Council will then submit a date for the school district to present our own budget. So we'll now transition and share updated attendance figures with all of you. So there is some good news here, which is that the last two weeks, we have seen our best numbers this year with 95% of our students attending. The chart on the right shows a recent decrease in daily absences that we do hope will continue with the remainder of remote learning. As of the 85th day of school, students with perfect attendance or attendance rate greater than 90% increased to more than 5,600. So we do hope that the return to more in-person instruction over time will serve to, again, reengage the students who, despite our greatest outreach efforts, have remained less connected during our remote learning model. But we are very happy to, to be able to demonstrate that many of our students are engaging at a level that, that we are pleased with. Switching to COVID-19 data, Everett does continue to see a rise in total cases, but like most communities, the curve is showing signs of flattening. As of today, there have been more than 7,000 positive cases in Everett, and hopefully, we have seen our final surge come to an end. Over the holiday season, our daily case counts were regularly ranging from the 70s to the low 100s. But since January 20th, Everett's daily cases have ranged from 13 to 55, which is an improvement. This slide is starting to look different from what we have been staring at during the rest, last few meetings. After a prolonged period of consistent upward movement in both our average daily incidence rate and percent positivity, the last week has seen a short drop on both counts. So these are very encouraging signs of improvement, and again, we do hope these trends continue. Everett's improving rates do put us at ninth highest among Massachusetts cities and towns. So of course, you know, again, we are not fully there yet, and face coverings and social distancing, again, remain the strongest measures. I know I say this at every meeting that we can take to slow the spread, and these practices will definitely be an essential element of returning to school. So with January on the books, we can now update our chart tracking COVID for Everett school-aged children. So as expected, the holidays contributed to a new high of 298 confirmed cases in one month, and there are surely more asymptomatic young people in the community. So this does emphasize the district's need for testing before returning larger numbers to our buildings. We've also been keeping close track of exposures within school buildings, and this chart shows positive cases identified in blue, along with each exposure to those deemed close contacts in red. So our contact tracing efforts will need to ramp up when we do bring back larger groups of students. To that end, I know I've mentioned before that we are hiring COVID-19 coordinators who will oversee contact tracing and other processes related to the pandemic, such as testing. I know that in the last presentation, I talked a little bit about how we don't always see the exact same trends or even the trends that we expect to see from week to week. And here is an example, where last week, we were lucky enough to not have any cases in our e-learning centers. So we didn't have one single case, which was really great news. However, again, we saw on the previous slide in January that 0 to 19 are seeing an increase in cases cumulatively in January. So again, the data, you know, shows us both sides of this, and we have to keep all of that in mind as we make decisions moving forward. So this chart shows the same cases and close contact data in aggregate. And again, it is nice to see an improving trend that demonstrates our in-building precautions are increasingly effective. So again, this January bar graph looks very different for in-the-school buildings than what it admittedly looks like in the city as a whole. And as we discussed during our last meeting, the district will have to close our e-learning centers when we do eventually move to hybrid learning. So we will not have the staff necessary to run the centers when students return to our classroom. So we will not have the staff necessary to run the centers when students return to our classrooms in significant numbers. We have explored every possible way that we could potentially do that even with spaces around the city. But at this point, we are unable to offer e-learning centers at the same time as we are offering hybrid. So the peer professionals and staff who have been very instrumental in the daily operation of the e-learning centers will in fact be needed in the classrooms and we will be required to perform their traditional responsibilities. So this chart shows the average daily attendance rates at all of our e-learning centers for each week from October 30th through January 22nd. So as you can see, the numbers are consistent but modest. They range from a low of 197 to a high of 284. And again, this is across all of our e-learning centers. So the average daily total e-learning center attendance during this 10-week period is approximately 233, which is less than 3.5% of our total enrollment. So more than 400 students did sign up for the e-learning centers originally. So we also never approached 100% attendance of what we had originally had enrolled in the e-learning centers. That said, we do appreciate the importance of the centers for our families who are utilizing them on a regular basis and we will continue to explore ways in which we can support these students, even if it is not within EPS when we do transition to hybrid. So we are looking at other partnerships with state licensed early education providers who might have places for our students on the days when they are learning remotely. In the meantime, our e-learning centers will continue to be open every day and families will receive ample notice before those centers close and before hybrid begins. You know, COVID-19 is, the planning is often involving a lot of trade-offs and you know, we recognize that as we fill one void, we are often creating another. We realize that as we are making our plans and it is impossible to find solutions that work equally well for all students and families. So again, in this case, closing our e-learning centers will be greatly offset, we hope, by the opportunity to launch in-person learning for all of our students. We are pleased to also announce, oh. Share again, did I lose the presentation? I'm going to come on. Alright, so next I'm going to talk about hybrid learning. So at our last meeting, we did discuss, you know, some key aspects of what will be our hybrid plan. Let's see. Can we get that? So chief among them was the basic structure of our in-person schedule. So you originally approved a week on, week off schedule. But we have requested that you approve a change to a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday model. The committee did bring up several considerations at the last meeting that we have since explored and I just wanted to give you guys an update. So first, an important question was raised about PEBT benefits. So unfortunately, EPS students who do participate in hybrid learning will receive less money per month in the PEBT benefits than students who continue in the fully remote model. However, this is the case regardless of how we distribute our A and B cohorts. So any student who is enrolled in a hybrid program, regardless of the schedule, will receive less in their monthly benefits. So that is one of the other trade-offs that we do have when we go to hybrid. We've also reached out to our partners because something else that got brought up was if our partners would be able to better accommodate our students on an every other week model versus a three days per week model. And again, while we don't have any formalized partnerships with our community-based organizations at this point, we're just really exploring. We have at least confirmed that it is neither easier nor more difficult to accommodate students, whether it is in every other week model or three days per week. We did do some extra outreach to our principals who did reach a consensus on the AB schedule, which is interesting because previously and even last summer, I think more often our leaders had not advocated for the, or had, you know, were kind of split on the one week, week in, week out model and even I was. But as we have learned more about the experiences of other districts and the specific needs of our families, you know, our opinions, I think have shifted over time. So specifically, they are clear in their belief that students are better served by attending school on a weekly basis, not bi-weekly. And many of our principals also pointed out that there were some practical benefits to the weekly schedule, like when we have to administer formative assessments and summative assessments. So as a result, we continue to believe that the two weeks, two days a week in A and B schedule, doing Mondays and Tuesdays would be more beneficial than the week in, week out model. And we will be requesting later on this evening for a, a potential vote, our emotion on this matter. And then finally, since we last met, the state has changed its guidelines for the COVID-19 vaccination, so which many of you have already known. And this has unfortunately prevented the, you know, us from being able to facilitate a vaccine clinic as we had originally planned for EPS teachers and staff. In fact, our hope was for our teachers to start receiving the vaccine this upcoming weekend. So that was our plan was for them to have a clinic this upcoming weekend. But now the timetable has been thrown into flux and we are left to figure out how to best adjust on the fly. So I would like to once again thank the city for advocating for our staff and for our families. The vaccine delay happened despite the very best efforts of Mayor Di Maria's office, the Everett Health officials and EPS administrators. I know that they tried every which way in order to make a, even a Plan B or a Plan C to, to see if we could get our educators vaccinated as we had originally planned and as part of our return plan. You know, before I do speak more at length about our current thinking, I did want families to know that the delay in the vaccine clinic does also mean that we will delay the family question and answer sessions that we were hoping to host next week. So we were announcing these, but now we're going to hold these events in English, Spanish, Portuguese, and Haitian Creole on a school by school basis as soon as it makes sense. And so we are now aiming for the week after the vacation. So looking into the near future, and this is what I would like for us to discuss today and hear from the ETA on tonight. You know, obviously, our preference was to offer the vaccine to our educators. You know, my preference would be to offer at least the first dose of the vaccine to EPS personnel before we were to reopen. Unfortunately, we are unable to make any guarantees on that front anymore. Before we were able to map out the timeline for both the first and second vaccine distribution and at this point, we don't even have a first date of that distribution. So we are now third in line, educators are third in line in Phase Two and those, those categories are now very discreet and the local municipalities do not have the discretion that we originally had. So the state has tightened up very, very much on those regulations, which is why we're unable to do this. So, you know, unfortunately, again, since we can't make any guarantees and it is, has it, has been often the case during the pandemic, we are dealing with yet again, another time that we have to be flexible, we have to change our plans and we have to plan accordingly. And so on one hand, you know, I know that the, we are going to continue to advocate for teachers to receive the vaccine. You know, I think that's happening statewide. But the state has decided very clearly that they are not going to prioritize teachers in the first phase of Phase Two. And I think in part, this is because the data shows that the spread in schools is minimal. At the same time, Desi does continue to strongly urge districts to offer in-person classes. So they are, even though they are not providing the vaccine to teachers and even though we continue to advocate for it, they are undeterred in their recommendations for us to return to school. So speaking strictly about the EPS, we do have to recognize that more than 50% of our families who did complete our hybrid survey did indicate that they would send their students to school. And they did not state this for next month or some indeterminate time in the future, but now in the month of February. So we had asked them, if you were to return in February, if we were to return in February, would you send your students? So these percentages, as we demonstrated last time, are also higher among certain student populations, which we were not surprised to see, including our English learners. So if we do not move on hybrid learning as fast as we reasonably can, that does mean that we are not responding to a very significant percentage of our families. And this is extra important to note because families who prefer remote learning do not have to participate in a hybrid schedule once we do return to hybrid. So I do want to be very honest about that and we did take into account the newest responses we received, but we are still at about a 55% yes response to returning to school and 45% no. And again, that varies. There are more yeses, obviously, at the K to seven level than there are at the nine through 12. And there are more yeses in our English learner populations or in the surveys that we received that were in Spanish, Portuguese, Haitian Creole, and so on. So we have been, you know, very cautious and deliberate in our approach to the pandemic, but I think we have reached, you know, the next juncture where we need to commit to launching our hybrid plan. And I think we need to consider doing this regardless of whether we can offer vaccine clinics to staff. And again, it was our best intentions to be able to do so. But you know, the, the clock is ticking when we do kind of need to decide what our plan is for the, this school year. And the next several weeks are going to be critical in determining what we can offer to our students over the last three to four months of the school year. So in preparation for a potential vote at our next meeting on a revised return to school framework, it is important for us to hear from our teachers. So we will be continuing to meet, negotiate with the ETA regarding the return to hybrid instruction. And in this light, I would like to respectfully request to allow the ETA, who was here tonight, to present their ideas on returning to hybrid. So with your permission, I would like to invite Kim Auger, the President of the Everett Teachers Association, and Anna Siders, our high school mathematics and engineering teacher, who is also a member of the Executive Board of the ETA, to present on hybrid.
I make a motion to bring Ms. Auger and Ms. Siders.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to bring before us Ms. Auger, President of the Everett Teachers Association and Ms. Siders. I'll take a voice vote on those. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Welcome ladies. Thank you. Thank you for driving here in the storm to make this meeting.
It was a tough one, but no, but thank you. And again, our condolences also, Mr. Parker, to your, your mother. She was an invaluable member of our staff and she's going to be missed by so many.
Thank you.
We, our hearts are with you right now.
Thank you.
So I have to thank Ms. Siders for making these amazing graphics that you're going to see. So we just wanted to really state and we appreciate the comments that the superintendent made. So in Everett, it's been a community effort to contain COVID-19. And our city was the first to really take this virus seriously. We made some big stands in the very beginning of the pandemic and we want to continue making sure that we continue on this safe path and that we are returning in a very safe environment. Also, we want to make sure it's not just about our teachers and our students, but it's about our families, it's about our community, it's about the entire city that we want to make sure that we are all working together to make sure that we come back in the best possible environments. We want nothing more than to be in front of our students, but only when it's safe for us, for our students, but especially for all of the families in our district. And we also want to thank the superintendent administration and the city. They put forth every effort to ensure that we were going to be able to be vaccinated, to make sure that we were going to be able to move, move on this and be able to start working on our hybrid model. We are very disappointed in the governor's decisions. Of course, we want all of our members of our community over 75 and 65 to be able to also get the vaccination. But to have a safe school environment, we do feel that having both vaccinations is very important. So we do want to express all of our thanks for making that happen and we look forward to the day that we can make those clinics, clinics happen. So Anna is going to start our presentation on our first slide. And Ms. Siders, please feel free to interrupt at any time or to give some more information. So during remote learning, I have to say, we, we did this right. We were one of the few districts in this state that did this right. From the beginning, the superintendent met with the association, met with our subcommittees of our negotiations team regularly to ensure that our students were getting every single thing they need. The distribution of the Chromebooks, the just different things that all of our students needed. And our teachers, our teachers and educators made sure that we had to pivot on our learning, which never, we never thought would even have to happen. On, on the dime, they just, they just went into another mode and it was amazing. And all I can do is give them all of my kudos, but we were a model that other districts in the state were looking at. So you can see just on this slide right here, some of the many apps and platforms that our teachers are using. Some of these, which we had never used before, they started using these from the beginning of remote learning. They had to differentiate instructions for all of our different students as we're not, they weren't in front of us, obviously. We still had different needs in every classroom. So a lot of these different programs our teachers had to use on top of each other on multiple different lessons for making sure that they've reached all of our students. If they, a lot of these are entertaining and engaging. As a parent, I'm able to see what my child's doing also as a seventh grade student at the Lafayette. I can see that although remote can never be perfect, we have moved forward to make this in the best possible case scenarios that we are. And we were just having a meeting the other day in the relationship building. Not only our teachers are saying some of these are the deepest connections they've had with a lot of their students over the years. Because they're able to talk about different things that are going on, they're with them constantly, then they're able to reach out and they're also seeing some of the things that their families are able to do and bringing those things back into our, into our teaching. So all of these things, although remote learning, like we said, is something we never thought we'd have to do, it isn't the best of all situations. Our teachers have made it the best in the state. So I just want to stop there and see if Ms. Siders wants to talk about some of the platforms that we were using.
So there's probably hundreds, if you compare all of our students and teachers of different platforms that are being used. And some of the greatest things about all these platforms is that they really help us individualize and differentiate instruction. And to be honest, we probably wouldn't have had a lot of them if it wasn't for COVID. So it's kind of like one of those silver lining things, like obviously this is not the best learning environment and everybody knows the best learning environment for our students is in person. But we've really learned to amplify the experiences that we do have. And in these, some of these pictures, you can see that just the extents that teachers go to, to make sure that the, the learning is live for their students. In this bottom picture, you can see a teacher with all of her students reading the same book and they're just reading it together during class time. And so teachers have gotten really creative about how to, how we do these things. And they've learned a lot. We've had a lot of teachers learn technology almost instantaneously to be able to make remote learning happen. And it's working right now.
Thank you, Anna. We're happy to take questions. I don't know if they're easiest at the end or if you wanted to do it by slide, but if any members of the committee want to stop us during the presentation, please feel free.
So our next slide is just focusing on data. So we, as the ETA, but also working with the superintendent administration over the summer, we had focus groups out this summer to really focus on some different areas that were going to be needed to make sure that we were going into this foreign land of remote learning, into an even different environment than we had to in the fall, in the spring, excuse me. So going into in the fall, we had to approach everything with even more intent and there was a lot more accountability from Desi going into the fall. And our teachers really, really came out and were able to do everything possible to make this all work. And through that, the negotiation had subcommittees. We had a health and safety committee, a curriculum committee, professional development committee, high needs committee, and technology committee. And during that time, the superintendent and members of the school committee, Ms. Lambert, met with us regularly to go over some of these different scenarios that could come up. And through our conversations, we were able to ensure that our remote learning model worked, that we changed.
that we changed things that may not have worked. We took into consideration what we were hearing from our parents, what we were hearing from our students, and especially from our teachers and other educators to make sure that we were able to just embark on the best learning journey possible. Also, with professional development, we had some time in the beginning of the year to really be able to focus on some things that were were foreign to us, that were just brand new. So our professional development was high quality, and we look forward to working with some more professional development because I think I said at another school committee member, that COVID has changed the way teaching is going to happen. It's changed, going to change the way teaching is going to happen forever. Look at the snow days. Look at the remote learning. As I watched the news tonight, the different districts that are doing that, this is something that's with us. And just and just again, we got it right. And let's, we just got to keep going, and we can fix the things that we we really have to work on. But the CDC emerging data is really some things that are important. And these are a number of different indicators. So the CDC recommendations on this page show the indicators for transmission risk in schools. And there's three core indicators. And they include the number of new cases per hundred thousand within the last fourteen days, the positivity rate, the mitigation strategies. And we cannot control mitigation strategies. And the superintendent has addressed many of these areas, which we, which would enable us to have low risk of transmission. But we cannot control the infection. We can't control what the community brings and what is happening from there. So Anna, if you wanted to touch on a couple of these different aspects, and we can answer any questions that might have come up from the last two slides?
Sure. So this graph shows the average daily daily incidence rate per hundred thousand. And we use the hundred thousand because it's a standardization. So you can kind of compare it with other communities. As you can see here, we've been in the orange since mid-November, I believe. And so, which is really good news that we've never hit the red. And it's important to say that these colors are not associated with the Massachusetts colors. So when we talk about a red community in Massachusetts, that's a Massachusetts indicator for for community transmission. However, this data is specifically related to the CDC indicators for school transmission. So they're not, they're not completely aligned with the colors that we traditionally see for Massachusetts. But as you can see here, we've been in the orange for, at the higher risk of tra, school transmissions for a while. The good news is we haven't hit the red. And also, we've seen a big decrease in that that daily incidence rate over the past two weeks. And then this graph shows a week by week from the beginning of the school year of where we've been for our percent positivity. The CDC suggests that anything that's higher than ten percent is considered the highest risk for transmission within schools. And this is the the positivity rate of the community. And we can see here that we have been, Everett's been in that highest risk category since December. Again, we are getting really close to that line to being just higher risk instead of highest risk. But it does show kind of the trends over time. If you look week by week where we would have been classified for the CDC recommendations. And their guidance typically now says five percent or less. And so they're looking for that five percent. And right now, we're hovering around ten percent.
So again, and the superintendent had touched on this also. We just wanted to touch on the average daily incidence rate. And this chart here shows the average daily incident rate per hundred thousand. This standard standardized, standardization, excuse me.
I'm president. This one, this one is Everett cases by age.
Oh, Everett cases, and I apologize.
No worries.
Well, as you can see, that in Everett, fourteen percent of us ages zero to sixteen. So on the mayor's daily reports, he has it broken down a little bit differently than the state does. So on the average, Massachusetts has it twenty percent, zero to nineteen. And our case is a fourteen percent, which which is good in comparison to the state. But still, we're we're over that daily limit. We're over the limit. So we are concerned about that. And as you can see, the cases by age during the last two weeks, the breakdown over on the far right-hand side. So if you have any questions on this, I don't want to have to read it to you. But if you wanted to take a look at it, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
One of the important things to note in this slide as well is that Everett, according to, we were taking numbers off of the mayor's statements that he makes every morning with the case counts. And he does zero to sixteen as an age group versus Massachusetts, which looks at zero to nineteen as an age group. And so we do see a little bit of a gap here. But it's also important to remember that seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen-year-olds are probably people with essential jobs. And so those are kids working at fast food restaurants, and they're working low-wage jobs. So those are just extra factors that could contribute to the difference in the percentage. However, it does look like less of our younger population is contracting the virus or I'm sorry, less of our younger population is testing positive for the virus. This does not include asymptomatic cases necessarily. And it's really hard to get the numbers for how many in each age group were actually tested in the city of Everett versus in the state of Massachusetts. So just some things to consider, but they are interesting numbers.
Thank you, Anna.
I actually had a question. Were you taking questions now, or do you want me to wait?
Yeah.
Okay, so I just want to clarify my understanding about transmissions within the schools, including the e-learning centers, the Maddie English and the Devens, which are all servicing students live. I understand that what you've been presenting, I understand that what you've been presenting are the risk factors and that they're significant. It's my understanding that the tracing information is difficult anyway because of the inconsistencies at the state level in terms of the asks and then how that stuff gets factored into Desi's website. There are lots and lots of issues. And it is also my understanding that while we're at high risk for transmission within the schools, we haven't actually had any transmission within the schools. But I want to make sure I'm right about that because a lot of people are listening right now. And I want to make sure that they understand the difference between the risk of transmission versus kids have come to school, caught COVID, and brought it home. So it's my understanding that no one has caught COVID within an Everett public school. Am I correct in that? And that doesn't have to be just for the union, obviously. That's whoever.
I actually, I don't know the answer to that question because we only get reports as to positive cases and not the contact tracing.
I don't know if that answers your question. No. We don't have an answer to that.
I believe that some of the cases have been transmitted through the schools, but I'm not sure if that has been an official statement of the schools.
So no. So when we keep track of our of our cases and our close contacts, what we have seen is that the close contacts have not tested positive. There was one case where a close contact did test positive. However, that was a case where they, it was students, and they weren't even in the same cohort at school. There was transmission outside of school that we confirmed. So we do not, and again, we have a very small percentage of students and staff in our buildings. But we do not have any record, again, because what we do is track the the positive case and then the close contacts that are associated with that. And then if any of those close contacts become positive cases, and we have not seen that.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted clarification, just to make sure that my thinking was clear.
Yeah, no, it's a very, very good point to make.
If I can interrupt just for a moment, just as a matter of protocol. Well, I can't see you. I cannot see you because they're sharing the screen. If you would like to speak, if you can go down to the reactions button at the bottom of the bottom scroll bar, and you've hit raise hand, I am watching the the raised hands, so.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Okay, so if you take a look at this graph right here, it's the county data. And this one shows in Middlesex County, Everett has the highest daily incident rate at one hundred and two, I'm sorry, one hundred and two. And the next highest is Marlboro at seventy-three point four. In Middlesex, Essex, and Suffolk counties combined, which is our next slide, thank you, Anna. Everett is fourth. Chelsea is at a hundred and sixteen point one, Lawrence at a hundred and nine point six, and Revere at a hundred and two point six. So we just wanted to show that although our numbers, and we are happy to say, as the superintendent said, are starting to go down, our numbers are still high, and we're still one of the highest rates in the in the state. So we did a survey from the ETA to our membership on the response to hybrid. And it was given to all ETA members on January seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Five hundred and twenty-nine members responded. Our educators were asked about their ability to return to in-person education. Nearly sixty percent of all educators indicated that they would return with reservations. The gray choices are those who will return and represent about seventy-seven percent of our educators. The red choices indicate that they may not return and represent about twenty-three percent of EPS educators, which is a concern to us. We want to make sure that our students are well-serviced, and we want to make sure that we are able to get the best possible education. So again, those numbers, we care deeply about the safety of our staff, our students, and their families. But those numbers would indicate that we would have some issues with staffing. Some of our educators' concerns coming back into a hybrid model. Some of my priorities, and this survey was given to members, again, as I stated, on one seven twenty-one. And this one had four hundred and seventy-five respondents. And the top three priorities for the EPS educators include a low positivity rate in the city, vaccinations, classroom size, and social distancing. So again, those are three things that would be the major concern and the major influence of our staff feeling that our children were coming back into our safe environment. So then I responses for positivity. And again, from a survey with five hundred and thirty-four respondents, educators were asked what positivity rate would make them comfortable to return. Half said less than three percent, one-third said less than five percent, and one-third said another, another percentage. When compiled, seventy-seven percent of the educators believed a positivity rate of less than five percent would make them comfortable to return. Did you have anything you wanted to share on that, Anna, or was there pretty self-explanatory on that one?
Pretty self-explanatory, yeah.
Thank you. So current in-person data, as you can see, currently open our e-learning centers. And the superintendent gave us a more in-depth vision of how many students are there regularly with an average of about two hundred and thirty students. In person, our administrative assistants, paraprofessionals, sub-separate teachers, and building-based administrators and custodians. More than fifty percent of COVID cases in EPS have been among our staff members. So in a district comparison, so a comparison of percent positivity on some districts still in remote learning. And as the superintendent said, I believe that there were sixteen other districts that is still to, total full remote that are also considered a gateway city like ourselves. And these are districts we know to be still fully remote, except for Malden, which was going to start hybrid today, but I believe they ended up staying remote today due to the weather. Everett is the red line on this graph. And as you can see, it's on the higher end of the districts. We're just below Lawrence and Worcester.
I'm just a correction. We're we're actually above Worcester. Worcester is this bottom line here. So this is Worcester here, Everett, and then Lawrence. Malden falls right here. And so we can see that Everett is on the higher end of the percent positivity of the remote districts.
Thank you. And Anna, is this the chart that shows where that we're this almost two separate lines, or is that?
That's the next one.
Thank you. All right.
And then, so two points just to make out here that Worcester has decided to stay hybrid indefinitely. The superintendent is looking at the number of new cases in the vaccination, vaccinations for staff as priorities in reopening. Brockton is right now hybrid, or no, I'm sorry. Their plan is to return to hybrid in March with the highest needs first. But that is contingent on their decreasing numbers. And their superintendent stressed the importance of keeping consistencies for families, especially when trying to decide when it's the best time to switch so that families aren't uprooted by switching back and forth between different models.
And I did speak to the president of Brockton today, and they are right now going to stay fully remote. And they don't have any of their students in, unlike us, who have our high needs and our e-learning centers open.
And then one last point about these cities is some of these cities are actually our Desi district comparable. So when you do demographic data searches on Desi's district profiles, you will find that Brockton, Chelsea, Malden, and Revere are all within our Desi district comparable cities. So it's very appropriate to compare us to them.
Thank you. So this is the the shot that I was just mentioning to Anna. So this is a comparison of the same districts with daily incident per hundred thousand. So just to be able to note, there's a clear difference between Malden, Brockton, Worcester, and Fitchburg. And Everett was right in the center until mid-January. So if you can see on the chart, where the red line is for Everett and the districts below us. So there's there's definitely a comparison between those different areas. And you can see that we have been consistently in the middle of of those districts.
Yeah, so we've been consistently above Worcester, Springfield, and I believe this is Malden, yeah. And Malden, and Fitchburg consistently throughout the year. We've been kind of hanging out in the middle for a while, then we spiked around the holiday season, which is, you can see everybody spiked then, but we spiked a little bit higher at a little higher rate. Good news, though, is that it is coming down, just like all of these, this top group all seems to be merging around the same common number, which I think is good.
And again, if there's any questions, don't hesitate to ask. So just some new developments. So during the week of one sixteen to one twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-one, nearly one thousand in-school cases were reported across the state. There were three new variants of COVID-19, two of which are in the United States. One has been diagnosed in Massachusetts. The new variants seem to have more severe symptoms. They are seemingly more contagious, and reinfection is possible, according to the CDC under these new variants. A research study by the National Center for Analysis of Longitudinal Data in Education Research determined that in districts where the community spread was high, the risk of in-school transmission was increased. So this is something that's a bit alarming to us. And this is something that we just wanted to to bring to the attention of our members and also to the school committee.
So this kind of speaks to to the the importance of watching the community spread as well as the in-person education settings because there is evidence that as the community spread is increased or is higher in certain communities that the spread in school may also be higher. Now, a lot of the communities with the highest spread are also not in school. So there's not a ton of data. But so far, what it's saying is basically that the the risk of in-school transmission does have some dependence on the community spread. And therefore, it can't just be determined that that school spread is minimal just because it's a school. So it's, they, 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 they play together a lot. And so you have to kind of watch both nuances to see how they interact with each other.
Thanks, Anna. So just to finish, and our vision. Our vision should be focused on setting a long-term plan for our students, not only for their return, but also for their education, regardless of the model. Listening, limiting the stress on educated students and families is essential. And a lot of the studies that we have been researching and some conversations with other districts, we understand that remote is stressful in itself. But the change and the possibility of having to go from one modality to another is something that we are very, very concerned about. So we want to make sure we do it right, the same way we did remote, right? We want to make sure that we're moving into hybrid to make sure that the stress of our students and our educators is limited. But we also some research that Anna was doing for us, and I want to thank her for her continuous research on this since the beginning. Does show that students that were transitioning from one mode to the other, there's actually more stress from the transfer from the from the different phase to go from one phase to the next as there is in the actual staying in that one phase. We're not saying we expect to be in remote forever, but we want to make sure that we are envisioning our hybrid model to be as the best and as well planned as we planned out our remote model. So this is our long-term goals. We know that data, we know that data is what has been across the country and every time we hear all of these different things about COVID, we are listening to data across the board. Dates are important, but we need to focus on data to be able to make sure our dates work. And then the delivery, the delivery of our new model to our students and to our community is our long-term goals to make sure that all three of these things are able to be what best fits for our district. And just on some last notes, the CDC recommendations are, as our superintendent has always been very, very clear every time she's presenting that there's five percent positivity rate. Less than twenty average daily cases per hundred thousand. Local trends, three weeks of decreasing cases and attention to school age percentages. And then, of course, the vaccinations. And again, I cannot thank our district and our administrators and the superintendent and the mayor and Sabrina for working so hard to ensure that we were going to be prioritized. Like I said in the beginning, it was just very disappointing, but I know that that was their first priority and our educators also know. So we look forward to again to be able to get back on and to be able to get those clinics up. Because we are dedicated as a staff to be back, we're dedicated as a staff to be with your students. But to ensure the safety of all of our community members, we do feel that we would need both vaccinations to be able to be fully safe in any teaching and learning environment. And so the vaccination phases from the state which have been changed. So phase two started on February first. We were hoping, and I know some other districts in the state also to educate the to educate, excuse me, to vaccinate their educators was going to be starting within that first week. Right now, we know that we are at the end of phase two. So February fifteenth to the nineteenth will be school break. Which will bring us to the second week of March and third quarter progress reports go out at that time. April second starts our fourth quarter. And then April nineteenth to the twenty-third is April break. And we feel that those dates are something that we really need to be looking at to ensure that our students do have stability. That our students are able to stay focused without the stress of changing, but yet also ensure their safety and their family safeties by having their educators come back vaccinated. And again, for our delivery, as we said, is another very important aspect of this. Of course, we've talked about the social emotional wellness of our students and our staff members throughout this pandemic. And we feel it and we understand we are parents maybe seeing dips in their children and we're here and the community. I just have to say this community has just been amazing in every bit of outpouring for every member of the community. So with our social emotional wellness, it was with great pleasure that we heard the superintendent talk about the fact that our athletics will be starting again soon. As a parent, I know that my daughter's athletics have made such a huge difference in her emotional well-being. So we look forward to those athletics starting again. Clubs as our educators, we look forward to having those clubs. Right now, maybe we could start working with those on the on remote and we have lots of educators that have already signed up to lead those clubs. And those are some things we'd like to start seeing gradually be able to get into in person to make sure that our students are having that social emotional connections with each other and with their educators. And of course, activities right across the board. The the community has been offering socially distinct activities and we look forward to working with the city to be able to get those off the ground to ensure that our students and staff members and every member of our community are working on that very important aspect of their social emotional health. Student outreach, you've probably seen all over social media, different things that teachers are doing across the country. But I just have to thank our teachers and our city itself. The packets, weekly packets going out to your students. In the beginning, parades, knocking on their doors, making sure just graduation itself. From K through twelve, pre-K through twelve, our teachers have gone above and beyond to make sure that they're reaching out to our students and making sure that there's that personal connection. Making sure that we're meeting their physical needs. The city has been just again amazing. When you look at the food pantry and the amount of people that come out every Saturday to do that. Our educators that are out there every Saturday, I just can't thank you all enough for being out there and being part of that community and showing the importance of making sure that all of our community members are well taken care of and building the relationships. We also have a new initiative, the ETA has been buying a lot of remote learning tools. And the teachers have put in some requests, so we're getting just as simple as whiteboards, markers, crayons, pencils. Just out to help them be able to make their packets. Teachers are doing this on their own, spending their own money. And also, I want to throw out that Stacy Chavo from the Parlin School and one of our executive board members and retired fighter fighter Joe McLaughlin have started a new initiative, just getting desks to students. And it just has taken off and it's exploded. So every community member is just reaching out to ensure that we are making sure that our children have everything that they need. And just as the last piece enrichment planning, we dedicate ourselves and we'd like to make every effort to work with the superintendent and the city to ensure that if any students, we always used to have a summer enrichment program, we would love to work with our community to make sure that could maybe get off the ground to help with any gaps that could be happening with students so that they can have a great transition back into traditional learning in the fall. And of course, after-school programs too, that we would be able to work with the city and the district to ensure that our students are being able to get any help that they need, whether it's academic and social emotional to be able to get back on track and to be able to get right into hopefully back to traditional learning in the fall.
Thank you. I have Ms. Cadelo like to ask a question.
Sure.
Thank you. And thank you both for that presentation, presentation. Sorry. I would like to know, would you mind sending? I know I would like a copy of that. It's like to go over it sometimes when you're just glancing and you're reading it and I was trying to take notes, but I'd rather have a copy if you don't mind emailing it. And to any of the other members that might like one. That was a very, very good factual data driven presentation and and well done. Thank you so much. Maybe we need to have a competition between groups to like who does the best presentation boards. Because we're getting really good at this. And I also want to agree with you, Ms. Swaga. I think our staff has done a phenomenal job. Coming out of the box, barely knowing what to do. And never having faced this before, we have grown to such levels and it's like, I am so proud. And I see it firsthand, as most of you know, I have my grandson every day and I'm learning a lot too. And one of the things that I've noticed that they all miss being there, of course, but I'm noticing them learning and and willing to speak out. And speaking out on Zoom is as much intimidating to some people as it would be in person. So I think this is there's I think there we can find a lot of positives in what's happening here. And the other thing is, I know that my grandson's teacher absolutely thinks about their social needs in as much as asking them what kind of videos they want to watch on break or what would they like to see? What do they want to do for lunch on Friday? They're going to earn a special day. Do we want to have lunch together on Zoom? Would you like to watch a video? It's very sweet and it's very engaging. So it's it's going that extra mile and I I wish everyone had this opportunity and I know a lot of people do. And I'm fortunate, I only have one child that I've sit with every day, all day. Other people have two or three and believe me, I feel for them because I know it's not easy being the monitor at home. But I just want to say thank you and please pass that along to the entire staff. I'm absolutely amazed at how we have grown and pulled together and right from the beginning, it was always said, we'll get through this together. And that's what Everett is doing. And thank you to the superintendent, my colleagues on the board, the entire city government and to the entire staff of EPS and our students who've really come a long way as well. And those that need are getting the help that they need. And I'm hoping that all parents and students know how to reach out because we have a way to reach them. Whether it's in-person or remote, to help them with any needs that they have. So thank you again. Sorry, I didn't mean to speak that much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cadelo. I have Mrs. Murray next and then Mr. Barrows to follow.
Thank you. I, first of all, thank you very much colleagues for the amazing bar that you're setting in Everett. You're absolutely right that you have been a model for the surrounding cities in many, many ways. Having listened to your presentation, I want to make sure that I'm hearing the ETA's asks as clearly as I can. So if it's all right with you, I'd like to boil them down to what I think I heard. Just so that we're all on the same page. Is that all right with you? Okay, thank you. I heard you reference doing it right, meaning that there would be collaboration between the ETA. This body to whatever degree is necessary and the central offices in terms of rollout and what the delivery of a hybrid model would in fact look like, correct?
Absolutely. And we have begun our conversations again with the superintendent to ensure that we're going to be able to do remote, the same quality that we, I'm sorry, that we'll be able to do hybrid, the same quality we did remote. And we've been working with that and I look forward to those conversations to continue.
Okay. And then the, I think the other three things I heard were around data points. And the first one was a less than five percent spread in the community. The second one was three weeks of decreasing cases in a row. And the third was that all educators would receive both vaccines. Is the ETA looking for all three of those pieces to be in place before we come back? A combination of those three? I understand you're wanting input on the delivery, but also on the when we come back and having it not be by date, but more by data. So would you feel comfortable talking about what that data would look like in order to allow you to comfortably come back?
Sure. And Anna can jump in at any point too. And I know Peter Leahy is on this call, my vice president also. So yes, we that is our position. We stand by all three aspects. We stand by the CDC's recommendation of less than five percent. Positivity rate. We also want to ensure that those rates are going down and we're seeing that happen. So we're confident that that is going to continue because this community has been pulling together from the beginning. But our stance is the most important piece of it is the vaccination piece that we're all have both of those doses and that they are working to their full extent. Because we just feel not only for our educator's safety, but it's just only feel, we've had a lot of our our high school students been reaching out to us that they're actually very nervous to return to school because some of them are working in high in different areas in the food industry, but also that they're afraid of bringing it home to their families. And that that is our concern. Because again, we're a very multi cult, multi-generational community. A lot of us have our parents that live with us, our our children are growing up with them, which is absolutely wonderful, but we want to make sure that our families are safe, not just our families, our families, our city of Everett families. Um, Anna, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that, but that is our position, Ms. Murray.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, Mr. Barrows and then Mrs. Lynn.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Auger and Ms. Siders for the presentation. I also want to thank all of your members who have contacted for the past two weeks have contacted me and all of my colleagues in this committee with their concerns. So thank for the emails, their calls. And and I'm really glad that you that you presented tonight this great presentation. So it shows the collaboration between this body, the administration, the school administration and the ETA. I was, I was going to ask the same question that Ms. Murray asked. She right went right in my mind and asked the question was exactly that question. I, I, so on that note, I'm not on the negotiation team. If those those trends like less than five percent rate, I'm just looking at what I wrote down. Three weeks of decreasing cases in the city of Everett and the vaccination. I mean, again, this is not a, no, like a white issue, but that there might be some some of those, some some combination of those that that would be able to bring back our our students to to classroom, right? So it doesn't, it wouldn't have to be in your, on your view. All of those three in order for they just to come back, but a combination of those would perhaps be possible.
So again, we, as our position, we want to make sure that we are in the safest environment possible for everybody involved. So with that being said, right now, that that is our focus, but we are watching the numbers and we're watching those rates daily come down. It's with great happiness in the, you know, to watch them come down. Of course, we're still watching many members of our community who are are ill and with it's, that's very troubling to us, but the numbers coming down, I think will correlate with the the vaccinations and I think we'll we'll be on a good stance. By the time that the phase two and that our vaccinations come, that we'll be able to see both of those things happening parallel to each other. Anna, you're awesome on data. So was that something you feel that possibly could be correlating? The numbers coming down along with them by the time we are getting our vaccinations?
Yeah, and I think just looking at the data on one of the slides, you could see that we were actually in that green zone for, I believe it was the positivity graph. We were in that green zone for pretty much until November-ish time. And so I think with the changing of the weather and just the data trend, my biggest concern is the strands. The new strains of the virus and what that entails, especially because they're now finding cases of people who have had COVID in their recent past, not like months ago, but weeks ago, that have now been infected with the new virus. And so that's obviously very concerning. But I think just like if we looked back three weeks ago, we knew almost nothing about those new strands and now we do. And I think in a few weeks ahead of now. When the vaccination timeline is really closing in, we'll have a lot more information and a lot more data. And I feel like every day there's more data that comes out. And so I think as we get closer to the vaccination time, there's going to be a lot more data. We're going to know more about the vaccinations efficacy with regards to the new strains. We're going to know about how the new strains is actually impacting Massachusetts. If like depending on the the impact of that's happening. Some of the research data I've seen is that the next surge is they're looking at the end of February, early March. As the next surge with the with the new strains. So yeah, I think I think it's a combination of being very precise and diligent in our choices to make it least disruptive to our students. But also timing everything in a way that once we go back, we're back. Like we're not creating a situation where we have to go home again.
Right. Well, I just want to reiterate that I also want all of our teachers and all of our staff members to be safe and only to return to a safe environment. I don't want anyone to return and be getting COVID at all. I just, I I hope that again, not in the negotiations committee. But I know that the the union and the superintendent and and the administration, we continue to to be discussing ways and finding common ground for us to go back to a safe environment. I am very concerned. I am very concerned, as you, Ms. Auger, pointed in your presentation, with the mental health of our students, especially in a community like Everett, where many of our students are low income and a lot of parents are not home to help them with remote learning. So I'm very concerned with the mental health of our kids. And that's why I'm looking forward for this hybrid model to be implemented, when it's safe, of course. And everyone is safe. So I just want to thank you again for, no, you think, incredible presentation, for the initiatives that, including Mrs. Shavo initiative with the desks. It's just amazing. And again, looking forward to a common ground so we can return safely because I believe that it's really needed for, again, for the mental health of our students and for everyone. So, thank you.
No, and I thank you for that. And again, and I also, that's one of my biggest concerns also, Mr. Barrows, and we want to make sure that hybrid is being able to work. There, you know, we want to make sure that the students still aren't looking at their Chromebook while they're in school. And I know that talking to the superintendent, talking to Mr. Shaw, talking to Ms. Auger, Ms. Sanauger also, we want to make sure those initiatives are right. We want to make sure that it is the best learning environment and not just a transfer of what's happening remotely back into a classroom, just being face to face. We want them to be learning and making sure that their emotional health is being in that building is on the best level and not still just looking at a computer. And that's something I think that we will continue those conversations with the superintendent and her team to ensure that that happens. And that's another focus. We want to make sure hybrid's done right. And I know that's their main goal too. And that's where, you know, obviously, these common threads are so important in these conversations between all three bodies, the union, the school committee, and the superintendent, because we are on the same page. We always do want the same outcome. So it's just, again, I just think we could do hybrid, amazing, the same way we've done remote. Again, nothing's going to be perfect. There's nothing like being in person with our students. There's nothing like seeing those kids come in and, you know, just the environment in a school. But we want to make sure it's right. So I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lambert, and Mrs. Lambert, and then Mr. Abraze.
I may have jumped the gun. I apologize. Is this the end of the superintendent update? Because I had a few questions there as well.
No, currently, it's still a matter of that would get the ETA before us. So if you've got any questions of the ETA.
I'll yield to Mr. Abraze then.
Okay, Mr. Abraze.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I'm going to apologize in advance, but I need two minutes to get up on my soapbox. I am completely confused by locally a governor, nationally a new president, who in his inauguration speech said, within his first hundred days, he wants all students to be back in school physically. Because how important it is to the mental health of all of our youth. As some of you know, I went to get my first COVID shot approximately a week and a half ago. And lo and behold, right here in our Commonwealth, in terms of priorities, okay, I sort of understand law enforcement to a point. But the fact is Massachusetts prisoners are a priority in terms of getting COVID vaccines. And again, I'm just throwing it out there, but someone very succinctly said to me, if this were a priority for our students to get back physically in school, wouldn't our teachers be the first people who would be the ones that would be offered the vaccines? So again, I'm just questioning the hypocrisy of all this because it just does not make sense to me. I was looking for an opportunity to make that statement. And oh, by the way, on Friday, I got an email from our governor that basically stated, all state workers who are working remotely plan on doing that same thing until June. So again, there seems to be all sorts of lines crossing here that quite frankly, just don't make a lot of sense to me. If we want to get kids back at school, teachers back in school, and it's so vital to the students' mental health, as Mr. Barrows would say, and I'm going to bet it's probably important, the mental health of the teachers and a lot of the administrators, that they get back in the classroom. And sorry to take this time to do this, but I just, I guess I'm in support of everything that's going on here. But I'm just questioning the leadership nationally and statewide as to exactly what is going on here. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Abraze, and I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, I don't take like the term first responders, but who's there before the social worker? It's the teacher. Who's there before the police officer? It's the teacher, you know, it's that combination that works. And I'm greatly disappointed in the actions of the governor in this matter. Okay, Ms. Murray, does your hand up again to ask a question to the ETA?
Actually, I just wanted to clarify and piggyback on Mr. Abraze's. First of all, there are, I believe at last count, 26 states in which vaccines have been going out to teachers. So this isn't a national issue. This is a Massachusetts-specific issue. We've made a decision to move our teachers back in line. So I hope all of the parents out there who, and I'm going to openly admit that I am very, very angry right now and that it's probably not a good day to be making decisions about hybrid. For me, I think I'm going to need more time to be thinking rationally and fairly because I am outraged on behalf of my colleagues. I am outraged on behalf of the ETA. And I'm enraged on behalf of my own family. And frankly, I'm enraged on behalf of myself. I've been live in a building for quite some time now, as has my husband, with children every single day. And, you know, as far as it goes, I hope that all of the parents who want hybrid, as well you should, I know how depressed my students are. I hope you're going to reach out to the State House because as quickly as this decision was made to move teachers, that decision can be made just as quickly to move them right back. So call the governor, call your senators, get active, and get those vaccines so we can all go back to school and work. Please, please, don't leave this on just us because clearly, this governor has an issue with educators and this governor has an issue with local districts of government. Because they didn't just completely waste the ETA's time. They wasted the mayor's time, the superintendent's time, and the school committee's time. All four of those bodies were on the same page, and we were ready to move forward as a city. And the state came in for absolutely no discernible reason and changed the rules of the game yet again, which is so disgustingly and horrifically dismissive. And personally, I hope you don't stand for it as citizens, and I just needed to say that. So, end of my soapbox. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And if there's no further questions of the members of the ETA, I would ask if someone moved, excuse my customary thanks.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you again, folks.
Thank you so much for appearing tonight.
Thank you. Have a great night. Thank you.
Okay, I see there's a couple of hands. If someone left over from the last conversation, could you please clear the raised hand? And we're going to go back and talk about the superintendent's update. And with that, I'm going to recognize Mrs. Lambert and Mrs. Sonny. Ms. Sonny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the superintendent, and it kind of piggybacks on exactly what Mr. Abraze and Ms. Murray just said, is we have these competing interests and the school committee and the administration, the city are in a difficult position and that we did not put ourselves in. It's the pressure to go back to school. Our families are also asking for that in some element, but not receiving the assistance. But to go back to the superintendent update, so the enrollment dip for 2020, for the foundation budget, where was that in a specific grade or grades? It was a few hundred. It wasn't.
I'm sorry, so can you repeat that, the enrollment from the budget?
Yep, so and the governor's budget. The student enrollment declined from FY21 to FY22. Do we have data on where that declined?
So I believe that was the data that I had presented last time on our enrollment. We have seen a dip in enrollment. We have seen it predominantly at the kindergarten level. However, we have seen it again overall. We definitely have had less students. We are hoping that we will have an increase in enrollment next year. I can bring those numbers again, but that, and I know that last time too, we had, you guys had asked for a breakdown because we have provided the English learners and the subcategories of our enrollment. However, we actually do not have that comparable data from prior years. So we did not disaggregate that data that way in prior years, which is why we only have the one year this year, and we will be disaggregating it that way moving forward. But that is the dip. And again, I think most districts around Massachusetts saw a similar dip.
It just goes back to contacting state legislators and the governor about holding harmless because it's not an actual dip. It's families that chose not to enroll in kindergarten, which we know in Massachusetts is optional, as well as possibly new families, newcomer families that have not yet integrated into the school district that normally would have. And so I'm concerned that that impacts us in a larger way when it comes to the second item, which is the, we're actually in year two of the Student Opportunity Act. But it seems to me from the governor's budget that one year was funded. So we're still in a state of catch-up. And if there was ever a year that we needed that funding, it would be this one. Because we, I know that we can make up learning loss, but it's going to cost money and resources to do that and do that effectively. So I just wanted to understand that and essentially put a call out, not just to my colleagues, but anybody watching, that these are all factors that are going to have an impact over that seven-year rollout of Student Opportunity Act. Our English language learners, our low-income students, our student enrollment, those are all things that year over year have a cumulative impact. So just something to keep our eyes on. And perhaps we can invite our state legislators to come to a future meeting to talk about that. And thank you for clarifying.
Ms. Sonny.
Thank you. First, I just want to mention, a lot of phase one, a lot of people have not still got this vaccination. So I do know that appointments are not available, and there's a lot of people waiting still on phase one. But to the superintendent, the last meeting I mentioned about teachers, powers that cannot come back for medical reasons, I mentioned, would they, do we have short-term or long-term disability that they have, that they can get paid with FMLA or anything like that?
So again, it's all dependent upon their collective bargaining agreement and their own, like again, like I mentioned, they should be calling HR, they should be having an interactive dialogue for a pair of professionals, for example. They have to work a certain number of hours in order to get FMLA. So it, no, not necessarily will they have access to that.
So the ones that they do take FMLA, that's only like 12 weeks. Is that correct? That FMLA protects their job, or is it longer?
It, I believe it can be longer. I would have to get back to you on that. And they are able to, again, if they get approved for FMLA, could use their sick time if they had that, and that's part of what a lot of folks do when they take FMLA. But I can certainly, again, get you the answers to that. It does change from person to person based on their situation, and again, from unit to unit.
Right, right. I know that, would they be able to collect unemployment if they're not able to come in for medical reasons? And they don't have, you know, sick time or anything like that? Would they be able to collect unemployment?
Not to my knowledge, because we wouldn't be laying them off.
Okay. The other question is, when we bring the children back to school, are they going to still be, of course, six feet apart? Do we have enough room to bring them back hybrid if we?
Yes, so that was the original plan from this past summer, that we would be bringing back 50% of the students at six feet apart. So that is what we had arranged for the start of quarter two, when that was the original plan.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions of the superintendent on the superintendent's update? If you don't mind, just a couple of comments. So regarding the six feet, I believe Desi allowed us to go down to three or four feet. We decided to stay within six feet, and that's one of the reasons why we will not be having the e-learning centers, because we're going to adhere to the six feet. Mrs. Lambert brings up great points on the Student Opportunity Act. I happened to participate in a conference on the 23rd of January, of which Alice Peish was in attendance. And she's the chairperson from the House on Joint Community Education. And she explained that they're aware of the drop in attendance and that there is a hold harmless clause in the sense that a community won't get less state aid than it did in the past, but it still needs to be addressed. So. All right, so, Ms. Abraze, would you hand back up?
Yes, I did, Mr. Paco. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We recognized.
Thank you. Through you to the superintendent. I just, before I forgot, I actually made a note of it, that it was part of the superintendent's update. I just want to quickly comment on Coach Rob DiLoretto. I know I privately sent a note along these lines that, the one thing I know for a fact, knowing Rob, knowing his family, it's a great hire in the sense, not only terrific guy, I've actually had the opportunity to watch Rob coach from out on the field. And, you know, you want to get a perspective on someone as a coach. The best people to ask, quite frankly, to me, is the officials who watch him coach. He's highly respected across the board. He's one of the only coaches I know that, quite frankly, I've never heard a negative word about him in terms of his demeanor, the way he treats officials, the way he treats his players. And believe me, there are a lot of very successful coaches in our state that are not the nicest people in the world. Let me just put it that way. So again, great hire. I'm not trying to be as objective as possible, but I'm really excited about Rob and very, very happy for him. And again, my compliments to Tammy, superintendent or staff for this hire. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So seeing as no further questions of the superintendent, we'll move on to the next item. Thank you.
So before we move on to item number two, I would like to respectfully request a motion to approve the change of the hybrid schedule whenever we do embark upon it, from an alternating weekly schedule to the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday cohorts, with the Wednesday being a full remote day.
So move.
I'll second.
Okay, so motion made and seconded to approve that we go to an A and B schedule when we return to hybrid as the most every other week. Mr. Lessing, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Nine yays, zero nays, you have passed the air resolution. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So item number two is in reference to our amazing partners, the Everett Community Growers who are here and have been incredibly patient. I respectfully request that we invite Lenka McNally and Kate Jenkins-Sullivan to present us with an update of their work at, with the Everett Community Growers.
I make a motion to invite Lenka McNally and Kate Jenkins-Sullivan from Everett.
Second.
Okay, we have, we have a motion made and seconded to invite Ms. McNally and Ms. Jenkins-Sullivan before us, and I'll take a voice vote on this. Alls in favor?
Hi.
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 Alls opposed? So moved, if, um, this is McNally and, I'm sorry, Jenkins-Sullivan, if you can come before us. Superintendent, you have the floor.
Oh, I will go ahead and hand it over to the Everett Community Growers for their updates.
So hi, everybody. My name is Lenka McNally, I am the farm manager. And we are super excited to be here today. We, actually, all of us are here, you know, our outreach manager, Kate, Antonia, everybody is here. So I don't know if you would be able, some of you, we sent the presentation. Oh, yes, awesome. Thank you. So I think Kathleen's going to start.
And then we.
Yes, thank you. I wasn't sure, since only two people were kind of given permission to speak, are we all allowed to speak? Is that, is that okay?
I would actually need to respectfully request, sorry, I, I only had those names.
I'll make a motion to invite Kathleen O'Brien, Antoinette and Daniel as well from Everett Community Growers.
And Matts and Nicholas Howe as well.
It's our whole staff.
Everyone. I'll second for everyone.
Thank you.
All right.
Motion made and seconded to bring everybody, the entire Everett Community Growers community before us, I'll take a voice vote on that. Alls in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Come on down, ECG. You got the floor.
All right, we are very excited. Thank you so much. It's in the name, it's the whole community, we have the whole family here. So thank you again for having us. My name is Kathleen O'Brien. I'm the operations manager for Everett Community Growers. And today, as we said, we have with you our entire staff. Lenka McNally, our farm manager, Kate Jenkins-Sullivan, who is our outreach manager, Antoinette Octave Blanchard, who is our youth manager, and Nicholas Howe is our youth lead on farm operations. Daniel Daddy is our youth lead on outreach and engagement. And Matts McNally is our senior youth crew member. And just to clarify a little, when we say ECG, we mean Everett Community Growers. We know, you know, acronyms are great here. And if we could move to the next slide, please, we'll just go over briefly what we plan to present to you tonight. A brief history of the organization, our mission and values, an introduction to our youth crew, and an overview of our past growing season and our plans for 2021 and beyond. And this, if you could go to the next slide, that would be great. And we just wanted to say how much we feel that this fits in with a lot of what the ETA was talking about in terms of transitioning our students back to kind of, you know, getting more of the social emotional wellness and things like that because our, our plans to partner and continue partnering with the city and the schools are hopefully going to do just that. So here are three of our kind of milestones over the past few years. We began from 2010 to 2012 through a community organizing initiative around food access and racial justice led by La Comunidad. And that revealed lack of space to grow food as a significant barrier to healthy food access in Everett. As you well know, the majority of our residents are renters. So many do not have or are not even allowed access to grow food on their, in their homes, on their homes, in their yard. So this work resulted in our first community garden at Florence Street, which you will see here in 2012. And then from there, we conducted a land inventory and assessment to find more spaces for food growing. So we created the Tremont Street Community Garden in 2015. And then in 2016, we created the Northern Strand Community Farm, which is on the trail. And we do just want to give a shout out to Samantha Lambert here, who was our first farm manager. So good to see you, Samantha. And we just wanted to briefly also just describe the difference between our community gardens and our community farm. So while the gardens serve as space for families to grow food for themselves, the farm is a space where our staff and volunteers grow food for the entire community. And from 2016 to 2019, we donated all of our produce to the Bread of Life Food Pantry. Last year, we piloted a farm stand to provide more residents with locally sourced affordable produce. And for more information on all of that, you can go to our website and see our annual report. And now I will pass on to Kate to talk more about our mission and values.
Thank you so much, Kathleen. Hi, I'm Kate, the outreach coordinator for ECG. Everett Community Growers is a community-based food justice organization. ECG strives to improve health and racial equity through urban agriculture, youth workforce development, and equitable policy change. By creating spaces across the city of Everett for growing food and community organizing, ECG is working to improve food access, build community among diverse residents, help raise up marginalized voices in public processes, and repurpose underutilized urban spaces. We believe everyone in Everett should have access to healthy, affordable, culturally appropriate food, and we honor this by running our very own farm stand and distributing our own locally grown produce during the in-season months. At Everett Community Growers, we are truly dedicated to growing our community one garden at a time. Antoinette will now discuss more about our amazing youth crew who worked tirelessly to make our mission possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Our ECG youth crew are a dedicated group of young adults, former and current Everett Public School students. They have a unique lifelong connection to gardening, nature, and our community. And they have leadership roles in the community outreach, marketing, and farm operations. So in 2016 and 2017, the youth were paid a small volunteer stipend to work at the farm. And in 2018, we began a formal youth program, youth development program, and hired about six young people to work during the growing season. And in 2019, we hired back three of those youth crew members, one new young person, and supervised two youths through the Mayor's Summer Youth Jobs Program. In 2020, we were able to offer year-round living wage employment and currently still employ three of our original members who not only take leadership roles in organization, but also participate in local and regional coalitions. So now I'll hand it over to Nick, who will talk about his aspects of the work at the farm.
Hello, can we, yeah, thank you. My name is Nicholas Howe, I'm the youth crew lead on farm operations, and I'm going to be talking a little bit of what we were able to accomplish in 2020. 2020 was a big transformative year for us. As you can see in the photo, that we had a lot of hard work, but it paid off. We, also, you can see in the photo, we were, we had a lot of help from Rosa DiMaria, the mayor's mother, who always comes down, she's just great, she's always there helping us out. Despite not only COVID, but other setbacks that we've had in that location, we were able to not only completely rebuild our site from the ground up basically, but we had one of the most successful years ever, pretty much, for the Northern Strand Community Farm. In 2020, we harvested over 900 pounds, which was about four times more than we harvested previous years, only about like 200. We donated of that 400 pounds and we sold 500 pounds through our piloted farm stand that, again, we all started this year. And in general, we noticed a lot more interest in what we're doing. We had more and more people come up to us wanting to help out, learn. We definitely had a lot of people coming to our farm stand, which was amazing. And yeah, that was all, it all happened last year, so it was pretty, it was a pretty big year for us. I think that's it. I think now pass it on to Daniel.
Hello, I am Daniel, and I'll talk about how food justice correlates to all this produce being sold and such. We, Everett Community Growers, believe are like specifically a food justice organization that focuses on distribution of the food into areas that need the food. And we're like trying to go for ways that basically everyone could get it, everyone has access to it, and everyone's a lot more happier. We do this through ways, for example, HIP or the Healthy Healthy Center Program, where we give out programs to like more people in the community of Everett. That way, we can have more people coming to our farm stand, and it's everyone, everyone's equal, everyone's happy. And we also do this through gaining view through EBT or SNAP, access to our farm stand. We're also using HIP, since we're like one of the only vendors out there that do this. We did it this year and it was pretty effective of people coming to us for our produce slash food. And and I think that's it for what I'm going to say, and I'll pass that on to Matt.
Hey, I'm Matts, I'm senior youth crew member for ECG. I'm going to talk about mental health benefits of our growing space. So that's one of the great things about our farm, and also in general, because nature in general is that regardless of your gender, of your race, political views, all that things, you can always spend time in nature, and you can relate to people that. And that will always like make you feel better about yourself, and also it's been scientifically proven to reduce risk of mental disorders and stress, which I'm sure I don't need to tell any of you, is a pretty big deal during quarantine. And I personally, working at the farm, pretty much stopped me from going insane over the summer. And as well, during the pandemic, the combination of both physical activity and the mental benefits definitely happens in Everett, especially in a town which is dealing really badly with mental health as well as physical health. So and then, again, scientifically proven to help all of that. And I'm passing it on to Lenka.
If you can go to the next slide, please. So hi, everybody. I would like to talk about our new location for the upcoming season. So we are currently working with the city to move our community farm to the old Everett High School. And we believe this is a great opportunity for our children and our community to connect and learn about urban agriculture and the way our planet works. This location will allow for easier access as it is in close proximity to Everett Public Schools. You know, there is public school right almost across the state. So using this space, we can directly teach multiple curriculum areas such as science, economics, environmental justice at all great levels. The hands-on experience has been proving impactful for everybody, especially for special needs kids, students, and English language learners. We plan to use different approaches to cater to different learning styles. And the main thing for us is access to nature is truly unique about our program, about ECG, and can't be really replaced with anything else here in Everett. If you can go, please, to the next slide. So our growing season, so we have been working with Chelsea Green Roots, more specifically with their ECOU group on school curriculum. The plan is, the goal is to offer a wide variety of extracurricular workshops, including opportunities to include not just children, but our Everett families as well. We will be, we will be able to offer students a different perspective on things they learn in a classroom such as plant growth, photosynthesis, and so on. Another great example of this is the Three Sisters, which is a Native American tradition going back centuries. I don't know if any of you are familiar with. This ties in historical, cultural, and scientific concepts to kids to all ages. We are also planning on a herbal, herbal garden, which is, which is a great sensory activity, and a butterfly garden. Another great example, how you can teach kids the beauty of nature and the cycle of life. If you can, please go back to the next slide. So the future and the long-term goals and vision. So we would love to keep working with the city, the schools, to bring all the benefits of urban agriculture to our youth so that we can create a positive, lasting change. So what we would like to see is garden at every school. We would like to see growing food being part of curriculum, school community, and point of pride. We would like to see cafeterias being supplied by freshly grown produce at each schools and also giving away produce families in need. We would like to see Grow Rules. This is an IKEA, a research IKEA project. It's kind of like do-it-yourself project, which, you know, is pretty doable, simple, so pretty. And yes, as you can see on the picture, and this is something we would love to see everywhere, indoor, outdoor, all over the city.
They're pretty cheap to make as well with twenty cost.
That's right, and most of it.
Labor as well, probably.
Most of it, we would love to see healthier and happier community. And so for the next slide, I would like to pass it on to Kate. Thank you.
Thank you, Lenka. So ECG is very excited about our new location and all the possibilities that come with it, but we cannot be as successful without your support and support from community members. So we're looking for new partners constantly, volunteers, and just overall members. So please feel free to follow us on social media, either through Facebook or Instagram at Everett Community Growers. You can also contact us via email at everittcommunitygrowers@gmail.com. Or you can stay connected with us by texting ECG, capital ECG, 2020 to 22828 and join our monthly newsletter, and I will drop that in the chat. So thank you guys so much for having us, we really appreciate it, and we're really looking forward to future opportunities with not only partnering with the school, but also community members like you. So please, do you have any questions or comments? I want to leave this space to kind of open up for questions.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for the presentation and I have the first question from Mrs. Lambert and to be followed by Mr. Barros.
Thank you so much, my farm family. I often say that I fell back in love with Everett at the farm and there's nothing like dirt therapy and it's true. And so I'm really excited about the new location because previously we did host field trips to the farm and I was always struck by how, how excited students got, but not just that, but our students have such a range of backgrounds that many, it was a little bit of home for a lot of students that, you know, come from a farming agriculture cultures. So do are you planning on offering more school time activities like field trips? Or are you looking for more, you know, enrichment outside of school?
We'll have Lenka take that one. Yeah.
So the plan is, yes, so.
Planning phases here.
So what, what we've been trying to achieve is, you know, the location in front of the high school. So the goal for us is to still go food, do the farmer farm stand. So we decided to dedicate the right half just for that while we use the left side for the educational center. So we still, we are still do, we are still be doing beds, but we'll be doing more of the Three Sisters will be doing the herbal spirals.
Educational stuff, so it's not really that efficient.
Yes, so we are do, so we've been working, yes, with the green, EcoGreen. On the school curriculum plus we have our main project, trying to think of idea how we can involve the community, how, how, how we can involve not just kids, but their parents and.
Anyone who wants to like learn one.
Yes, anyone who wants to learn. So the goal is that, you know, when people leave our farm, you know, they will be able to grow and would like to grow tomatoes in their backyard in a bucket.
Eventually, ideally, we wouldn't even be needed in this town because we, you know what I mean?
So people will find,
be able to do it themselves.
And people will find the passion that we have, you know, for growing because it's a, it's a great, it's a good activity, you know, some, you know. Well, you know, it's, it's good for your mind. It's, you know, the crude. Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, one of the things I got really excited about seeing all that you did in 2020 is we've always had space constraints and space limitations and I'm so happy I passed the torch to an engineer. And you achieved so much with the exact same.
You can't make me cry.
That opens up a lot of possibilities for, I'm thinking of school locations. Where we can produce more in some of the smaller spaces. Some of our schools already have garden space, I believe.
Yeah.
Variance is.
So it's food for thought, not to be, appreciate, but you know, have you thought about, you know, staffing youth development opportunities where you could expand?
And that's the goal. That, that is the goal.
Okay.
You know, hopefully in the future, you know, it would be so great to see, you know, I have three kids in the, in the schools, you know, my husband, he's a teacher. And I grew up, I grew up with schools. I grew up in Czech Republic. So that's how I was raised. We had, this was part of education. So I think it would be so great to see this adding, be added to the schools, you know, so the kids who can connect the hands-on experience with the stuff they learn in the classroom. And I think that would be like the goal for all of us.
Yeah, like I remember like when I was in the third grade, we did a lot of, I remember as well, getting a green plastic bag, you know, on the windows, like my being able to do that.
You lost them. Yeah, I think so.
We can hear you.
Can you hear us, guys?
Yeah. We teach that food doesn't grow.
And look, see all this stuff you like, guys.
Well, thank you and I will yield back my time.
Mr. Barros.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, just to piggyback on this Lambert. First of all, thank you for the presentation and I would, I can, I could totally see that at Everett High or any of our high schools. I believe Everett High had a garden before. But anyway, I would encourage you, if you haven't started yet, start this conversation with the superintendent because it is something that I would love to see. Of course, that would be, you know, depend on the what's needed, where and then there are many things that, that I would leave to the superintendent, but I would really encourage you because I'd love to see that in our school. That picture that you showed looks like, I don't know, it's like a, I just could see that Everett High.
It's the bottom.
There you go. Yeah, it's, it's just, and, and as you said, this would be beneficial in general for our, our students, you know, like as, as Matt mentioned, and mental health and, and that there's so, there's so much out of it, like so many good things that I, again, I would encourage this, this conversation to keep moving, to keep going with, with the superintendent and her team because that would be terrific to have that now in our, in our schools. So thank you again.
Thank you. And we will need support. Definitely. We are changing to a completely different new location because of construction that's actually happening on the Northern Strand Community Trail where we're actually, we were located last year. So we're going to have to, you know, move all our beds and all of that, that kind of construction and, and that planning is definitely going to need support from community members like you all. And yeah, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would love to second Mr. Almeda Barrios Barros's suggestion that you further pursue this with the superintendent, but I also, unfortunately, one of the first rules in being an educator is whoever's not at the meeting gets thrown under the bus. So not to speak for the mayor because he's not here, but he has been a huge advocate for teaching kids about food and healthy choices and growing food and buying food. So the mayor's office may also want to be looped in on this. Maybe Erin might have some thoughts on that, but now that he's a member of the school committee, this might be a project that he would feel particularly passionate about. Again, not to throw him under the bus or speak for him, but just to make sure that I got that plugin because I know he has in the past with this body, talked about his passion around teaching and food. So.
If I can just say something. No, I just wanted to say that we've been talking to the superintendent. It was actually her idea to do the presentation for you guys. And we have been working with the city. It's this new location. This whole has been being a partnership with the city. So we, you know, I don't know, Kathleen can add something to it?
No, I was going to say the same thing. The city will be helping us move, as Kate mentioned, all of our equipment, all of our supplies from the Northern Strand Farm to the front of the, the high school and the mayor is, has, you know, is, is fully supportive of the idea. So we're really excited. And this year, you know, we, we are definitely focusing on, you know, the farm and the farm standing, getting it, you know, as good as it was last year, if not better. And at the same time, you know, bringing in as many, you know, students and community groups and just residents as we can, because it is such an accessible space and we're just really excited to, we've been wanting to grow in this space for years. So it was our first choice for the farm and we ended up doing it along the trail, which we love now. It's a beautiful space, but we're just really, it kind of, it was another silver lining that, that came out of this. So we're, we're very excited. So thank you.
Any other questions of ECG? I see hands up. If you've asked your question, please take it down. Okay, so seeing no questions, if I care from the chair. This is a, this is really exciting. I'm not a gardener. My wife is. And so through her, especially over the last couple of years, I've learned so much. I mean, I never knew there was a a safe haven of seeds from all around the world, you know, in the, you know, the mountains of Scandinavia, right? And I've learned so much about seed starts and the type of seeds and the weather, what grows and what doesn't grow, humidity, pest. It's really been amazing to watch her and and this is exciting for a number of reasons. Everett's a food swamp. What that means is that we've got a lot of places to buy food, but it's just not that great for you. I mean, go out and try and buy a cucumber and a head of lettuce in your neighborhood. You probably can't. Witsen's are now in our second year, our food service partner. They do help community farm growing. I think their program is called like Uncle Elmer. We touched upon the high school and we have the Green Monster Group. So there's a whole coalition of things going on here too. Pollinators is key and gardening is hard. Pollinators is key. If you're not up for growing a tomato and eggplant, plant milkweed. About 15 years ago, a woman presented to the school committee and donated her butterfly collection from all over the world. I mean, there was butterflies from Madagascar. And she's originally from Chelsea. I'll never forget her, her closing words were, there's not enough milkweed. So grow milkweed. And for everybody watching this, go on YouTube, Google Growing a Greener World with Stephen Ritz. Stephen Ritz is a former educator in New York. He is phenomenal. He will make you go out and buy peat moss and seeds and you know, worm tea. And what he does is exactly what you're looking for, ECG, as far as promoting agricultural in schools. And, you know, this is great stuff. Matt, you, you were right on when you talked about, you know, the mental and physical aspects. I mean, what helped us throughout this pandemic was, you know, was, you know, seeing this stuff come to life in our own backyard. I can't tell you, this is just, can you tell I'm excited? And also ECG, I want to thank you for, give me credit for my wife's recipe in your email. That didn't go over too well in this house. You don't have to rescind it because I'll take the credit, but it really was Kathleen. So thank you. And I know how to get in touch with you. We'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no further questions of our guests, like to excuse the customary thanks.
Don't move.
Seconded.
Okay, motion was made and seconded to excuse the customary thanks. Thank you again all for your time and we'll, we'll see you in the dirt.
Thank you again so much. Have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night.
Madam Superintendent, it's item of business, please.
Yes. So I also wanted to just thank them for coming tonight, Everett Community Growers. This is a partnership with the city and the schools that pre-existed me, but I'm very excited to hear from the committee that there is an appetite for expanding and enhancing this partnership. That was what I was hoping to hear because we already have some plans in the works. So you will be hearing more from them and us as a collaborative partner soon. So item number three is to request permission to reopen negotiations with the pair professionals for a wage re-opener. So our paraprofessional salary scale was previously established at a daily rate and this wage re-opener is requested by both parties and was agreed to in our last collective bargaining agreement to build out an annual salary scale based on tangible criteria such as education, years of experience, et cetera.
So I'll, I'll move and I just want to comment that I I'm glad that that's happening and, and congratulating you superintendent for doing that because our paraprofessionals were paying with like discrepancy rates, like you started now, you started later, you started before, like when? So now we're giving them with this reopening a, you know, a salary that it's equivalent to their many qualifications and professional. So, so I'm, I'll move to reopen negotiations with the paraprofessionals.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion made and seconded. Any debate on the motion? And if I can, because I can speak on this matter this season. We, we need to negotiate because we need to be competitive. If you've seen the recent contracts that were agreed upon by Somerville, even Malden, we're, we're below, we're below them. And it's in this environment, especially with the hybrid, if we do go that way, it's going to make us less competitive. And we're not going to be able to fill the positions as best as that we could. So when I'm on board, of course, with going to renegotiate this contract. So with that, we do have a motion in front of us. It was made by Mr. Barros, seconded by Missani. So with that, Mr. Weston, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abaze?
Yes.
Mr. Barros?
Yes.
Ms. Pardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
I'm going to recuse just to be on the safe side.
Mr. Panarisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
You're muted, Mr. Parker.
Yes. So we have eight votes in front of zero, the negative. You have moved to open renegotiations with the paraprofessionals. Item number four, Madam Superintendent.
Item number four is a request to review the comprehensive version of the custodian, custodians contract. So on June 29th of 2020, the school committee did approve a contractual agreement with the custodian union through June 30th of 2021. While we had definitely approved to and agreed to those terms, when we were finalizing and formatting that contract for publication and distribution, it did come to our attention that we have been working under an old contract with several attached addendums and MOUs. So even what we approved was, you know, just some additional conditions, but there is a full contract as well. So the document that was sent to you is our attempt at a comprehensive custodial agreement that includes all of the custodians and school committees' rights under one agreement. We would like to have this cohesive contract. Again, we're not asking for approval. We're asking for review by our finance and negotiation subcommittee, the custodians unit, and then finally this whole committee. Again, our goal here is to create one comprehensive contract, which is something that I think we did for some of the other units last year, but we discovered that that has not been done holistically for this unit.
So if I, Mr. Chairman, so this superintendent, you're requesting permission to, so it's to review the contract or is to go back to the negotiation table? I'm trying to understand.
So ideally to go to the finance and negotiations subcommittee for review first, along with discussions with the custodial units, unit so that they could review it. While we don't believe it's changing any of the terms, again, you know, with contractual language, we just want to make sure everybody's in full agreement with everything.
And that is the language that you have sent that, send it over to us?
Right.
All right. So.
Yeah.
So I'll move on that.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion that's made. Okay. So we have a motion that's made and seconded to refer the matter to the committee on finance and negotiations. Uh, roll call vote, please, Mr. Weston.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarnie?
Yes.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative. You refer the matter to the Committee on Finance and Negotiations. Next item of business, uh, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. Item number five is a request to accept a grant from the, from Box for Madeline English and Everett High School in the total of $4,000. Box is a before and after school program that keeps kids active by providing movement and play.
Make a motion to accept the grant in a letter of thanks.
Second.
Um, any questions, debate on the motion?
Uh, just a quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Barrows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Superintendent, is this the, uh, program that is related to Reebok?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Uh, yes. Thank you.
Then Mr. Barrows still has a pair of, um, high cut Reeboks. So, uh, we do have a motion made and seconded to accept the donation in the amount of $4,000 from Box and, uh, let it thanks be sent. Can a roll call vote, please, Mr. Weston?
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarnie?
Yes.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Uh, nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative. You have accepted the, uh, the contribution. Next item, please.
Thank you. Item number six is a request to accept a donation from Eric Forge in honor of his parents, Wilbert and Jane Forge, in the amount of $600 for Crumb Bucks.
Favorable action on the donation in a letter of thanks.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion for you for favorable action. Any questions or debate? Um, seeing none, I'll call, um, ask for a roll call vote, please, Mr. Weston to, um, accept the donation in the amount of $600 and send a letter of thanks.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarnie? Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Nine, eight, zero, and eight. You have accepted donation of $600. Item number seven, please.
So item number seven is also a request to accept an annual donation from Mr. James Daly and his wife, Ms. Etsy Daly, in the amount of $500 to the Parlin School Library on behalf of the late Ann J. McCray, a beloved teacher who started working at EPS in 1977 and spent most of her career at the Parlin.
Make a motion to accept the donation in a letter of thanks.
Second.
Um, motion was made and seconded to accept a letter of thanks and, um, send a, uh, letter of gratitude. Um, on the motion, a debate, any questions? Okay. Hearing none. Um, for some reason, I wanna say this family has donated before. But, um, you know, it's not a matter for here or now, but either way. Um, so, Ms. Weston, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarnie?
Yes.
Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Nine in affirmative, zero in the negative. You have accepted the donation in the amount of $500. Uh, next item of business, please.
Thank you. So before we move to Roman numeral six, I did just wanna say that, you know, we are very fortunate. We do have so many repeat donors here in Everett and it's, it is so wonderful. Um, and also we have such wonderful school committee members who help us. In fact, the Reebok Box Grant was, uh, um, something that was connect, we were connected to through Mr. Almeida Barros. So again, I wanna thank this group for keeping us in mind and helping, uh, connect us with resources. We really appreciate it. So item number six is, um, items submitted by school committee members. Number one is membership to the National Hispanic Council of School Board Members, which was submitted by Chairman Parker.
Uh, I'll entertain a, a motion to refer this back to sponsor.
Oh, so move.
Second.
Okay. Um, motion been made and seconded to refer back to sponsor. Uh, and the reason why, this is just an informational piece. Um, you know, now on my new role with the M A, M A S C, as I learn things, I'm gonna share them with you. And it turns out this is a subcommittee of the National School Board Association. And apparently, you know, um, except for Massachusetts where we call them school committees, everywhere else in the country, they call them school boards. So within the NSBA, there's a National Hispanic Council of School Board Members, which if you read, you'd think you have to be Hispanic to be a member. You don't. As long as you resp- um, represent Hispanic students uh, for a fee, which is reimbursable through our expense system, you could become a member of this particular, um, nationwide council. And I, I forget the number, but I think we're probably like 60% Hispanic at this point. So all the members, you know, regardless of, of, of ethnicity or background, because we represent such a high number of Hispanic, uh, students are able to join, uh, this particular council, we're able to join in the dialogue and we're able to advocate, um, as one of the terms I mentioned when I first, um, took this new role as chairman, advocate on a national level. So, uh, with that, the, the motion is to refer back to sponsor. Um, I'll take a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarnie?
Yes.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Nine in the affirmative. You refer back to sponsor. Um, item number two, please, Madam Superintendent.
So that, item number two is impact of school reopening slash hybrid for special education. And that was submitted by Mr. Almeida Barros.
Um, Mr. Barrows is the sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank the Superintendent. As we've been, uh, discussing and including tonight, the, uh, return to the classroom in a hybrid model. One, well, it, I believe that's important for all of our students, but especially, uh, our, uh, special education. I would like to hear, um, I, I know that the Davens School, uh, we are having, uh, classes in person, right, uh, Superintendent? Uh, that are, uh, students who are, are part of our special ed, um, who are also attending our, um, some of our schools, uh, including our e-learning centers. Um, so I'd like to hear, uh, bring perhaps to a, a subcommittee, uh, bring in Mr. Donahill, our special, uh, ed director. Uh, bring also Dr. Wallace to tell us how, how has it been the experience of students at the Davens School with in-person learning? Uh, I think it's important as, as, as an example, so we can learn, uh, you know, how, how it's been, uh, what's working, what perhaps not working, uh, but also hear from the parents. Uh, we do have the CPAC, the Special Ed Parents Advisory Council. I'd like to hear from them as well. Um, and even, uh, a teacher who is, uh, teaching at, um, at the Davens now in person. Um, so bring that group together and share with us their, uh, their experience. I think could be valuable and important, uh, for us to learn as we are in this, uh, conversation and, and these possible negotiations of bringing all of our, our kids for, uh, hybrid, uh, now in-person learning. So if, I think, I think that would be important, that are, of course, it's important for all of our students, but now some groups such as our English language learners and our special ed students, I think would be important to hear from them, from the educators, from the parents, uh, as we are in this process of, of, uh, negotiations with the unions to bring our, our, um, students back and our, and our teachers and all of our staff members. So I'd like to hear from, from, from those and then perhaps bringing back and report back to this full body, uh, what we heard from, from those administrators and those educators and those parents as well.
Absolutely. We can, uh, certainly take the lead, um, our, our team on getting all of those, um, stakeholders together or even just individually getting feedback from them. I've, we've already received some feedback from them, but kind of formalizing it and putting it together, synthesizing it and providing it to this committee. We can absolutely do that.
Right. And, and perhaps, uh, Superintendent, uh, we could send this item if my colleagues, uh, agree. Uh, they could come to the, uh, subcommittee on diversity and equity and inclusion, uh, present to us. Uh, and, and then we could, uh, bring it back what we heard, um, to present to, to this body. Uh, not sure what your, what are your thoughts on that?
I think that would be a wonderful idea. I think it's definitely one of the things that's top of our mind right now. Obviously I'll let the committee chime in, uh, cause it's there, whatever is the will of the committee. But, um, I know that that's one of the main things we're concerned about as we're trying to come back is, as you've seen, most districts are trying to prioritize, um, their special education students or English learner students first. And I think as we're trying to figure out, since we no longer have, you know, the vaccination plan in, in front of us, that we need to figure out what is our next plan. And I think we should be like other, uh, districts trying to bring back our special educa-, all of our special. We do have some, uh, classes and the Devon School back, but it would be great to expand that and have a timeline for doing so. So I think that would be a great next step.
So with that, I will take you Superintendent. I believe, Mr. Chairman, I believe that Ms. Lambert.
I was gonna just put it in the form of a motion to refer to the Equity, Inclusion, Diversity Subcommittee.
Uh, thank you. Um, for questions, debate, we need a motion before us. So, um, if someone can second that.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. So, uh, the motion before us is to refer the matter to, uh, Equity, Diversity and Inclusion. So with that now, we'll take some questions and any debate, and I believe Mrs. Murray had her hand up.
Um, I think that given that nationally, we're seeing a move to move both sped and EL students back. I'd like to request that we add, um, the EL department, Ms. Augur in particular, maybe to the discussion as well, so that we can both find out what's already working in a place like the Devens and how we can possibly roll that out for our EL students as they come back, as they'll probably be our first tier of highest priority kids once we, uh, deal with the grade band issue.
Mrs. Lambert?
Thank you. Just on the motion, I was gonna, um, in support of that, I will amend my motion to add, uh, EL. Um, but also for my colleagues, I think that when, you know, to give the space for, um, our special ed directors and possibly teachers to discuss that. If we can figure out, if we can work out those processes for our highest needs students, that lifts all of our students when we go back. So, you know, we make sure that it's scalable. Um, you know, I have concerns about behavior issues, disciplinary issues that are a result of these changes and, um, you know, going from remote to hybrid, from wearing a mask from, so to be able to have that. So that's why, you know, I ask for your support to send that to subcommittee and add, uh, English learners, um, with an invitation to Ms. Augur.
Okay. So, um, are there any other questions prior to the vote? Okay. No. So the motion before us has been and seconded, uh, is to refer this matter, um, to the Committee on Equity, Diversity and Inclusion and inviting the key stake, stakeholders from the Special Education Department in English language learners. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarnie?
Yes.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Ms. Bar, Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Nine in the affirmative, zero in the, in the negative. You have referred this matter to the Committee on Equity, Diversity and Inclusion. Um, so with that, the next item on the calendar would be bills and payrolls.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,224,030 and 37 cents. Favorable action.
Second. Okay. Thank you. So the motion has been and seconded to accept bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,000,000, $1,224,030 and 37 cents. Um, the roll call vote, please.
Ms. Sarnie?
Yes.
Ms. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative. You have approved payment. Uh, Mrs. Lambert?
Mr. Chairman, I ask, um, to make a motion to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,224,030 and 37 cents.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion that's been made and seconded to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,224,030 and 37 cents. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello? Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarnie?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative. You have approved payment. I was taking a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Second.
Okay. Uh, motion made and seconded for German on, on the motion. Uh, if I could just take a moment, I wanna thank, um, you know, all of you, my colleagues, um, the community, the staff members, friends, family, on behalf of the, of the entire Parker, Cotty family. Um, we appreciate, you know, the kind words of support and your prayers up until this point too, uh, on behalf of my mother, Lena Parker. Thanks again. And, uh, if we give a roll call vote for adjournment.
Mr. Abraze?
Yes.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi?
Yes.
Ms. Sarnie?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative. You have adjourned. Have a good night. Be safe on the drive home.